Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the June 21st, 2021 Regular Board Meeting. Please stand for the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Roll call, Kelly. Here. Yeah, John is delayed.
Here. Here.
Here. Here. Here.
Here.
Here, thank you. Matt, would you review the fire exits, please?
Yes, exits are ready back to the LGI.
Thank you. Moving on to open to the public, I just want to mention to everyone before we get going that the mask mandate is still on and we're doing what we're asking our kids to do, so please comply. Is there anyone who would like to make a public comment? Okay, tonight we have a very special our tenure and retirement recognition. Matt, are you going to be the master of ceremonies for that? Oh, Bill.
Bill.
Great, thank you.
So, good evening, members of the Board of Education, Dr. Landau, colleagues, staff, friends, and family. Tonight, it's my privilege and honor to present two very special groups of people, the 2020-2021 Honoraries of Tenure and Retirement. Very nice. We can clap. So I know that I speak for all when I say how great it is to reach these milestones. For one, they are leave, for one group, they are leaving us after many years of continued service and dedication to bettering the lives of our students. And we have another group that are just starting out in their careers. They've grown tremendously throughout the last three or four years and continue to make a difference to us, with our students. So on behalf of the Beacon City School District, congratulations to you all. May you continue to grow, to shine throughout your lives. And for the next several minutes, we have members of our administrators present with us who would like to share something about each of our recipients. I ask that when your name is called, perhaps just stand or raise your hand. I'll be looking for you because I have something to give to you. So make sure you kind of make some eye contact with me so that I know that you're here. If not, I'll get it to the appropriate person afterwards. All right, so without further ado, we'll begin with Principal Sessoms-Wiggins.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Crystal Sessoms-Wiggins, and I have the pleasure and honor of serving as principal at the JV Forestill Elementary School. And tonight, I would like to congratulate Ms. Sharika McKinney on her tenure as a teaching assistant for the Beacon City School District. Unfortunately, she's not able to be here tonight due to her son's graduation, but she and I spoke beforehand, and she is very excited, she's very honored, and I would just like to say a few words. Ms. McKinney began her career here in the Beacon City School District in 2017. She served as a teaching assistant within the Special Education Program. She has been within the MAPS program at Forestill since the beginning of her career. This is a special program setting servicing students with a focus on management, academic, physical, and social needs. She is truly an asset to our school community. Tonight, excuse me, this morning, we had the honor of seeing four of the students graduate from our MAPS program who are moving on to middle school, and Ms. McKinney, along with the teacher she supports, was right by their side, truly a reflection of her work and her dedication over the years. So please join me in congratulating Ms. McKinney on tenure as a teaching assistant for the Beacon City School District. Thank you.
Good evening, I'm Cassandra Orsor, Principal of Glenham Elementary School. I am going to start tonight with Ms. Alexa Gartizer. She was unable to make it in person, however, I do believe she's participating remotely. I would like to congratulate Mrs. Alexa Gartizer for her tenure as a school psychologist. Mrs. Gartizer came to us with experience from a district in New Jersey, and since joining the Glenham family, she has been my right hand in supporting teachers, students, and families in many ways. Mrs. Gartizer has been instrumental in helping students in crisis, supporting the counseling needs of students, and working closely with faculty members to support students with IUPs. Pre-COVID, Mrs. Gartizer facilitated a lunch bunch group to establish open communication and acceptance between students at different grade levels. She has participated in Girls on the Run, the Emergency Response Team, and the Building Leadership Team. Mrs. Gartizer is a safe space and an advocate for the students at Glenham. She has been a welcomed addition to the Glenham family, and we are fortunate to have her trust and support. Congratulations, Mrs. Gartizer. Next, I would like to congratulate Mrs. Kristen Haight. She also was not able to make it tonight. They both have little ones at home, so she is also participating remotely. I would like to congratulate Kristen Haight for tenure in the area of elementary education. Ms. Cindello is here with me because Ms. Haight actually did her student teaching and then also a leave replacement in the time that Ms. Cindello was principal at Glenham. During Kristen's time at Glenham, she's demonstrated flexibility and gained great experience. She started working with a veteran team of teachers in the years that she did her student teaching and the leave replacement and was able to navigate and develop her own unique teaching style. Mrs. Haight has taught third grade and collaborated with many teachers in the building at all levels. She has embraced the responsive classroom approach and focuses on establishing a classroom family and building connections with both families and students. She is a yearbook advisor and participates in Girls on the Run. Mrs. Haight continues to be an asset at Glenham Elementary School. She is kind, funny, compassionate, professional, and always willing to help out when there is a need. Her high standards and commitment to academic excellence are what makes us truly fortunate to have her among our faculty and school community. Congratulations, Mrs. Haight. The next person who we would like to recognize is Ms. Denise Frazenda, and she is here with us tonight. Ms. Cindello and I will present for Ms. Frazenda because she does work in the capacity of a speech pathologist. So this year, the Glenham family will say farewell to Ms. Frazenda and congratulations, she is a fabulous speech pathologist. I promised her I would keep my sentiments short, sweet, and to the point. Just like her, she said that, but I wasn't going to. Mrs. Frazenda has worked in the Beacon City School District for 20 years and has been at Glenham for the last 19. She has worked in all buildings in some capacity except for the new high school. She started her career at Sargent, and she even worked in the old high school. Mrs. Frazenda has been a valued part of the Special Education Team at Glenham. She is knowledgeable, a mentor for our less experienced team members, and an advocate for our students. Mrs. Frazenda has a second home in Florida, and I know in retirement she will enjoy some well-deserved R&amp;R there. We wish Denise the best in her travel plans and the time spent with family. Congratulations.
So Denise, I couldn't let you go this quickly. So I did a little record review. So as Cassandra said, you've been here for 20 years. So prior to that, Denise did start off her career as an pastor, early childhood programs back in 1999. And then she did her student teaching at JVF from January of 1999 to May 99. Then on April 23rd, she had a letter of appointment for a probationary position with your starting salary at $34,731. Then on March 8th of 2004, there was a recommendation for tenure by Carmen Landriven to the Board of Education, and you were granted effective June 30th, 2004, for tenure. Many years of dedication into the Beacon City School District, and as Cassandra was saying in her speech, many years of support and nonstop advocating for the students here in the Beacon City School District. So it's been an honor to recommend or to honor her retirement.
So I am very pleased to represent the South Avenue staff members tonight. I see they are all here. All right, first, oh, all right. First, I would like to speak about Nadia Abramson, who started her career at the Beacon City School District in 2018 over at JVF. She came to us with experience from the New York City Board of Ed, and she was a fourth grade teacher at JVF. And this past school year, transferred over to us and began her time as a fifth grade teacher. Over the last three years, Mrs. Abramson has proven to be an asset to our school and district community. Her interactions with students reflect genuine caring and respect for her students. She has applied her skills as a culturally responsive educator to effectively support students, and she's also participated in responsive classroom training and embeds these evidence-based and research-based strategies into her daily practices. Mrs. Abramson has developed and maintains an excellent rapport with students, families, faculty, and administration. Mrs. Abramson takes full advantage of professional development opportunities and regularly attends workshops that are offered. She is currently a member of our South Ave School Equity Team. Mrs. Abramson continues to be an asset to our district, and it is my honor to recommend her for tenure in the Beacon City School District. Next, we have Carrie Veely, who received tenure in October. Carrie is a second grade teacher, and she started with us in 2016. She spent the first two years in an integrated co-teach setting and the last two years in her own classroom in Gen Ed. Mrs. Veely has the ability to read the needs of her students and support their social emotional growth. She is kind and compassionate towards all students and maintains a calm composure even through stressful and challenging situations. Mrs. Veely listens to the students and is well-respected by both the staff and the students she interacts with. Mrs. Veely is, has increased her professional growth outside the BCSD through continued courses at Duchess Bowses. In addition, she has participated in the Responsive Classroom Team and is a member of our Building Emergency Response Team. I'm thrilled to acknowledge Mrs. Veely's tenure in the Beacon City School District. Up next, Mr. Nick Nastasi. Mr. Nastasi is a special education teacher who has worked in our ICT or Integrated Co-Tech third grade classes and fifth grade classes at South Ave Elementary School. As a special education teacher, he functions as an effective team member collaborating with administrators, related service providers, and his classroom team. Mr. Nastasi works well with students in accordance with their individualized education plan and has provided helpful information and feedback at Committee on Special Education meetings. Mr. Nastasi's strengths are his abilities to utilize multiple strategies to support the learning challenges of his students. He establishes an environment that is age-appropriate and delivers feedback in a constructive manner. He uses a variety of methods, activities, and resources that accommodate various learning styles and needs of the students. Mr. Nastasi is a collaborative member at South Ave and offers support and suggestions to his teams. Mr. Nastasi has addressed some of his professional developments through in-service classes and continuing education coursework, and he is a member of the South Ave STEAM Committee. In his years at South Ave Elementary School, Mr. Nastasi has shown the ability to succeed as a special ed teacher. He continues to grow in the elementary special ed program and has shown the ability to meet each student's needs within our diverse school environment. It is my pleasure to recommend him for tenure. And lastly, for tenure, Ms. Katie Fallon. All right. Ms. Fallon has been an active member of the school community since she started as a first grade teacher in the Beacon City School District. Ms. Fallon participated in the South Ave Building Level Team and the BCSD Engagement Institute, and she is our clean data trainer for the building. Mrs. Fallon always maintains a positive professional working relationship with students, parents, staff, and administration. She exercises appropriate professional judgment consistent with district philosophy and objectives. Ms. Fallon has addressed some of her professional development through in-service classes and continues to address areas of learning through district professional development conferences and is currently completing a literacy graduate program at SUNY Albany. Ms. Fallon has consistently demonstrated the skills and knowledge required for excellent performance in an elementary classroom teacher, and she also brings her family to all of our PTA functions, and they are super great participants at South Ave events. It is my honor to recommend her for tenure in the BCSD. And lastly, I would like to acknowledge Ms. Diane White. Diane, it is a pleasure and honor to acknowledge you. You have been working at South Ave for 23 years. She began as a fourth grade TA, supporting students in ELA and math programs, and is also a TA in ICT V classroom, but she spent the majority of her time as our AIS Math TA, working with all grades and with many, many students year after year. Diane is a symbol of resilience and grit. She is a runner. Now that she is retired, she might try for that ultra marathon. I'm sure you'll be missing your commute each day. She lives about .1 miles from the school. Yeah. But we at South Ave will absolutely miss you. All the best in your retirement, enjoy the family and traveling, and if you ever feel like stopping by on a run of yours, know that our South Ave doors are always open. All the best, Diane.
Good evening. Brian Archer, Principal at Sargent School. I want to congratulate Anne Morrison, who is a kindergarten teacher aide at our building. Anne has been working in our kindergarten classrooms for over 20 years. She has a great sense of humor. She's warm and firm with the kids. Her colleagues always request to work with her every single year. She's been a lot of fun to collaborate with, and one thing I have learned about Ms. Morrison is that you don't mess with her bowling nights, so she will have more evenings to enjoy bowling. Congratulations on your retirement, Ms. Morrison. I also want to recognize and congratulate Debbie Travis, who is a teacher aide at Sargent. She's worked in our kindergarten and first grade classrooms. She's been at Sargent since 1989. If I did my math correctly, that's 31 years. She's always dependable and pleasant, and she was a lot of fun to work with as well. So congratulations, Ms. Travis. I'd also like to congratulate and recognize Donna Gillette. 33 years teaching all at Sargent. I have known Donna as a fourth grade teacher, but she has also taught second and fifth grades. Her classroom climate is warm, inviting, friendly. Again, she has a great sense of humor. She's a wonderful teacher and colleague to work with. I wish you all the best, Donna, in your retirement. Congratulations. Up for tenure tonight is our ENL teacher, Kathy Sepeda-Schwarz. She is a teacher that works both at Sargent and JV Forestill. A very highly competent teacher, always advocates for her students. I enjoy stopping by her classroom on a regular basis to learn what her students are talking about and sharing their experiences with me. It's always a pleasure. Kathy has worked many years in education, and we are very lucky to have her as our ENL teacher. Congratulations on your tenure. Up for tenure tonight is our phys ed teacher, Michael Carafano. He's a wonderful teacher. The kids are always outside. He's creative. He cares about all of his students' learning lifelong physical education activities. I was having a conversation with him probably a week or so ago, and he was explaining to me what a nice school Sargent is, and my response to him was, "Mike, you've made our school that much nicer, so thank you for your work at Sargent, and I wish you the best, and congratulations on your tenure as well."
Thank you, Mr. Archer. And if I could add to speaking about Mike Carafano quickly. Hey, Mike. No, you stay there, Mike. For the past seven years, Mike has worked his way up from being a substitute to a part-time PE teacher, to a probationary health teacher, to finally a probationary PE teacher. Throughout this time, Mike not only earned himself a positive reputation in the district because of his hard work, dedication, and work ethic, but he was also able to make a lasting effect to our student athletes by maintaining the status of a three-sport coach during this entire duration. In addition to coaching, Mike has served in numerous building-level initiatives, including organizing field trips, developing new innovative elementary PE unit lessons, serving as an unofficial Beacon Elementary PE coordinator, and one of his most valued assets given back to Beacon by coordinating fundraising efforts with other coaches in our district. The one thing to me that stands out about Mike is that he always wants to do better, and he's never satisfied with the job he's doing. Luckily for us, his students and athletes are the ones who see these benefits, as Mr. Carafano is always trying to stay ahead of the game with his unique ideas and his display of commitment to the Beacon Athletic Program. I want to end by thanking Mike for the already amazing effect he's had on Beacon in just a few short years. We are extremely fortunate to have you on our team, and I look forward to seeing you, seeing all of your future accomplishments. Congratulations, Mike.
Good evening. I'm Mike Keely, Director of Technology, and I'd like to ask you to join me tonight in congratulating Liz King, one of our system operators, on her retirement, as well as recognizing the hard work she has put into the district for 28 years. Liz retired in January and has been a lifelong resident of the Beacon City School District, and her children also attended the Beacon City School District. Many of us can recall how technology has changed in the past 28 years, and Liz has truly been able to adapt, learn, and reinvent her knowledge and skills throughout these years. When I first started working in Beacon, I quickly realized that Liz was going to be an asset to my team, to the district, and to the department. Liz's start time was 7:00 a.m., but on most mornings, you could find her in her office by 6:00. She once told me that she would look around the parking lot to make sure the custodians were here, so she wouldn't trip the alarm. Her passion for the job and technology were evident each day that she came to work. I'll never forget the sense of excitement she showed when pallet after pallet of Chromebooks and interactive boards came in. And she, she said this was a long time coming, and she was so enthusiastic about getting to work on the project. And she reassured me, "The team is going to get this done with her help." I admire Liz's attitude and work ethic, which is customer-focused and takes a tend-to approach. She's cultivated relationships for over 30 years with district stakeholders, building a relationship of trustworthiness and reliability. And on behalf of the Technology Department, I want to wish Liz and her family best wishes on her recent retirement. Thank you.
Good evening, everybody. I've got quite a long list for Roundabout Middle School, and Mrs. Cindello is going to join me for some of it, so we would like to start with our tenure recipients. First person that we have up is Mr. Anthony DeRusso. Mr. DeRusso is a Mr. DeRusso is a special education teacher at Roundabout Middle School. He is currently teaching ICT, seventh and eighth grade, social studies, but he has done every subject area at Roundabout Middle School over the last few years. In fact, one year, we had him do, I think, everything in seventh grade, if I'm not mistaken, right, Tony? So his schedule's gotten a little bit better, we've been able to focus him in social studies now. He has also been doing his administrative internship with us at Roundabout Middle School. So this entire year, he has helped us from scheduling through COVID to PBIS to different things we were running. So all year long, in addition to his regular duties and assignments, he's been in Mrs. Edelman's office and the main office assisting us throughout the year. He's been a great asset to the building and to the district, and we'd like to congratulate him on his tenure.
Mike Russo is a teaching assistant at Roundabout Middle School, and Mike has been assigned for the past several years in the ADL, the 16 or the 181 classroom. I recently interviewed Mike again for the summer position, and he thanked me for allowing him to come and work in the Beacon City School District. And I think it's the other way around. Mike is a very compassionate man who is very dedicated to his students, very gentle, and just a great collaborator. So we are very fortunate to give Mike tenure as a teaching assistant this year.
Next up for tenure at Roundabout Middle School, I believe also here is Mrs. Veracamp. Very nice, so she is with us. Mrs. Veracamp teaches our seventh and eighth grade technology at Roundabout Middle School. She comes to us with an engineering background, which has really been a great asset to our building in terms of what she's been able to do in the technology room. She is going to be getting trained in Project Lead the Way this summer. We have been able to rely on her for just about any PD or training we've had to do. She's a member of our equity team. She has assisted us in facilitating student circles as recently as this month, and she is definitely, definitely a strong addition to our building in the area of technology. So we wish her the best with her tenure. Next up for tenure, we have one of our assistant principals at Roundabout Middle School. We have Mrs. Edelman, who is definitely here. So Mrs. Edelman, go ahead. Mrs. Edelman came to us from Middletown. She started with us on October 31st of 2016, which we have definitely. So she spent about 10 years in Middletown prior to coming to Roundabout Middle School as an assistant principal. Mrs. Edelman has done an outstanding job. She is in charge of our state testing, which over the last four or five years has not been a simple task, as I feel like each year, the state testing has had different turns and twists that she's had to deal with. And every single time, she's been relied on to make sure everything is accounted for, the students are ready, and everything is dealt with, with never an issue. She also runs our PBIS committee. She partners with the Beacon Elks to run Student of the Month, so So she is our liaison with the Beacon Elks Club. They do a Student of the Month. She does all the work that goes into that and getting information out to our teachers, nominating students, contacting students. She's done that both for in-person students and our remote students. She runs our culture team and also runs our data team. In addition to that, she would be the main person at Roundabout Middle School responsible for the fact that we now benchmark all of our students in literacy. So she has been our focus person at Roundabout Middle School to ensure that through our STAR 360 program, all of our students are being benchmarked and having their reading levels checked and monitored. So it is a great honor here tonight to recognize her for tenure. So congratulations, Mrs. Edelman. Okay, that was all of our tenure people. Onto our retirements. We are going to start with a teaching assistant, which was Mrs. Servone Brown. Mrs. Servone Brown has been with us in the Beacon City School District for 20 years. All 20 of those years have been at Roundabout Middle School. So she has been a real staple for us at the middle school. She's been in our 6th grade ICT program and you can count on her for anything. She subs for us wherever we need it, attends trips whenever we need it. Believe it or not, I actually coached her son in baseball years ago. So years ago, when I was coaching modified baseball, her son Angelo was on my team. She was just a parent and then I got to meet her at work when I moved down to Roundabout Middle School and truly, truly a pleasure, a wonderful, wonderful, wonderful human being to work with, great with kids, great with staff. We wish her the best in her retirement. Next up for retirement, we have Mrs. Henrickson. I don't believe she's here tonight. Mrs. Henrickson has been in the Beacon City School District for 21 years as a reading teacher. She also during that time was a chess club advisor. She has been doing AIS literacy and also a key member on our RTI committee. She's been in charge of all the reading reports. Our guidance staff and administrators have relied on her ability to make sure the reports are accurate for every kid that comes through. She is kind, caring, compassionate, soft-spoken woman who truly cared about kids and was reliable every single day. We will miss her greatly and we wish her nothing but the best in her retirement.
Again, we have another speech and language pathologist that is retiring. Oftentimes you don't see two people from the related service leaving at the same time. So we're losing two pillars in the department to support students with the speech and language. Ms. Amy has been in the district for 26 years. Prior to that, she was employed at St. Francis Hospital for another, prior to nine years. And on August 28th of 1994, I looked at her resume and she applied for the position of speech and language pathologist and was appointed on September 12th of 1994. I'm going to go back with our speech and language pathologist. One of the quotes that I found that is really fitting for both Gina and Denise, it's "Speech and, speech pathologist change the world, one word at a time." And I wish the two and to Gina a wonderful retirement. Enjoy this new chapter of your life and we hope you're filled with good health, relaxation and fun.
Next up from Roundabout Middle School, we have Mrs. Sblane. Mrs. Sblane retired earlier this year. So Mrs. Sblane was a secretary who worked in the district for 18 years. 13 of those years were at Beacon High School. I was able to steal her from Mr. O'Neil, who so graciously sent her down to me at Roundabout Middle School. And she spent five years with me in the main office at Roundabout Middle School and she truly was a blessing for me. Just an amazing person, the kind of person that you want greeting parents, answering the phone, being their first line of connection that they make with the school district. Never, ever did she raise her voice, always calm, always kind. And I was very, very sad when she left me. But I completely understood her decision because her and her husband are spending a lot of time in the Adirondacks now. And in fact, that's why she's not here this evening. They just got back from the Adirondacks again. So we wish her nothing but the best in her retirement. Thank you. Next up from Roundabout Middle School is Mrs. Lyon. Mrs. Lyon is an ELA teacher in 8th grade. She has been working for 20 years at Roundabout Middle School, teaching. 15 of those years, she's been the class advisor. And that role, which she gets a small stipend for, she does an amazing job with. And the things that she does that show just how much she cares about kids, she organizes our 8th grade semi-formal every single year. And if anyone's ever gotten the opportunity to either work with her at that or just see it, she turns our gymnasium into like a prom venue. And it takes a lot of work, a lot of dedication and she does that all for the students to have a memorable and great experience. She also runs our moving up ceremony every year, does a fabulous job with that as well. When we started taking the students to Washington DC in 8th grade, Mrs. Lyon, who may not want me publicly saying this, was one of our main fundraisers. She was, she's an amazing baker and for anybody at Roundabout Middle School, we're going to greatly miss that. So if she doesn't come back and continue to make things worse, we're going to get very upset. She ran fundraisers with the staff to win cakes and brownies. She raised hundreds and hundreds of dollars to go towards students scholarship to go to DC. And never once did she take a dollar from it. Everything she did was donated for the, to allow students who couldn't afford to go on the trip to get to go. So I'm going to greatly miss that from her. She also was in charge of our barking bulldog newspaper for 10 years. She's been a member, she's been a union rep for over 15 years. And when we, a little side story, when we were in DC, she refers to her group as her lion cubs. So every teacher has a group of students while they're down there and her group was always the lion cubs. We are really going to be at a loss when she leaves us. Tremendous, tremendous teacher, does nothing but give back to students in the community and we wish her nothing but the best in her retirement. I think I only have one left. She's in the back. Her name is Mrs. Radford. She's a teaching assistant at Roundabout Middle School. And I saved her for last because she started the district in 1983. So she has been in the district, I would say probably longer than anybody else in this room right now. She has worked in every building, or every school I should say, except for Forrestal. So we're going to transfer her tomorrow to Forrestal. I'm just kidding, don't get upset. To Forrestal, we can work it out, Miss Sessons. So Mrs. Radford. A few years back, she was working in our self-contained classroom for a number of years with, with Mrs. Tiernas, her lead teacher. And at the end of the school year, we had to have a conversation because I wanted to change her position for the following year, which if you've ever changed anybody's position for the following year, you would know just how complicated that can be, that people don't always like change. So I asked Mrs. Radford to move to a new position that we were starting, which was our testing center. She wasn't really happy with me that day. I think she was really, really mad at me, to be honest with you. But the following year came and she had her own classroom and there were, there was nobody for the first two weeks of school to take a test and she just kept looking at me like, what did you do to me? And then they started to come, taking the exams. And then her rooms started to, to change and it started to seasonally be decorated every single season of the school year. And I will tell you to this day, it's probably the single best move I've ever made with staffing. Her, she transformed an issue that we had in our school, which was trying to provide students a space to test in, to meet not only accommodations, you know, you used to look, you'd walk through the hallway, there'd be kids out in the hallway taking a test because they missed school one day and they needed to make it up. She turned a room and an environment around at Roundabout Middle School where these kids had a fabulous place to test. I think they were getting graham crackers and juice and she's got lights on. She had pets, she's got plants. I'm going to tell you, she was supposed to retire that year. I got another couple of years out of her and I'm sad that she's leaving because that room is amazing and what she's done is amazing. But she's heading down to South Carolina and I wish her nothing but the best and we are going to miss you greatly. Great job.
Good evening, members of Board of Education and Dr. Landau. My name is Elisa Soto, Principal of Beacon High School. Thank you for allowing me the opportunity to talk about some dynamic folks at BHS. First, I'd like to congratulate Ms. Kimberly Rotaco on her tenure. I have had the pleasure of working with Ms. Rotaco for the last three years. She is a teacher who believes in developing inspiring relationships with her students. She prides herself on getting to know her students and full-heartedly believes that in order to establish a safe learning environment, she needs to open up and be vulnerable to her students. Every year, she shares who she is as a person and her life outside of Beacon so they know that she is a human. She allows them to see her make mistakes and encourages them to teach her as much as she teaches them. During the first few weeks of school, she makes a point to learn a fact about each student and talks to them about their interests. During classroom exchanges, I always see her stand out the entrance of the doorway, greeting her students and having conversations with other students as they walk through the hallway. Oftentimes, she would quickly ask her former students how they're doing, what they're up to and what their college career plans are for the future. It is evident that she cares for them. Ms. Rotaco is always driving to develop her skills as a teacher. Over the years, she has participated in various professional development opportunities which have shaped her teaching. She crafts and adjusts her lessons to support every learning style. In addition, she stresses the value of recreational reading, which has increased her students' creativity and wonder in her classes. Last year, she introduced a new course called Media Literacy. She helps students make sense of the pieces of information they receive throughout their day. She explored with her students ways that they can be more informed and thoughtful consumers of news media. To complement her classroom teaching experience, she has chosen to be involved in several after-school extracurricular activities. In the last four years, she has volunteered her time with Beacon players and has been her students' cheerleader at their after-school sports games. She's an active member of the RTI committee, committee, and has worked with students who are at risk and have made connections with these students in the hopes of helping them be successful at BHS. This demonstrates her commitment to the common good of the school and provides an excellent opportunity to build student relationships. Ms. Rotaco has made herself available to help her colleagues on school-based initiatives. She enjoys brainstorming with her colleagues on how to provide meaningful and engaging lessons for her students. As an ICT teacher, she is always looking to enhance her lesson plans by incorporating more station teaching, parallel teaching and team teaching. She ensures that she incorporates movement into the classroom such as gallery walks, partner activities, visual activities and group discussions to ensure engagement. She has expressed to me that she loves teaching and is beyond happy and loves her coworkers, students and their families and the Beacon High School community. Based on her success and commitment to the students as well as her dedication to our Beacon community as a whole, it is a reason I recommended Ms. Kimberly Rotaco tenure with the Beacon City School District. Congratulations, Ms. Rotaco. And now for my partner in crime, Samuel Sims. I'm delighted to talk about Dr. Samuel Sims. Tenure for Beacon City School District. I have worked with Dr. Sims for nearly three years. She is a leader who talks and walks our school's vision and mission statement. In the last three years, she has collaborated to implement our district's vision and vision and every day takes actions towards leading all stakeholders towards our vision. Samuel is attentive, methodical and has an uncanny ability to get things done. Her interest in helping people is sincere and it always allows her to meaningfully connect with everyone she works with. It is clear that Dr. Sims is a critical thinker. She is keenly aware of nuance and skills and synthesizing information to determine what is best for our students. She has served as a district's Title I co-coordinator for three years to ensure that our students are provided with equitable access to learning opportunities and resources. Dr. Sims has served as an instructional leader for teachers in a school experiencing change, which is a huge challenge. She has led teachers with an instru, with instructional planning process, always making student achievement a priority. She worked with teachers in the English department to create asset-based learning opportunities for their students by engaging in a social justice project, established the Beach, excuse me, BHS Poetry Slam. This is the third year of production and served as a liaison with community-based organization Beacon Lit in order to increase production and served as, excuse me, served as community-based organization Beacon Lit. The last three years, she has helped teachers make efforts to learn about the importance of making strong connections between culture and student motivation. Students learn better when their cultural values and practices are reflected and respected in the curriculum. Dr. Sims is a phenomenal educator, person and colleague. Dr. Sims has helped create a positive school culture in which students learn and grow by implementing an effective PBIS program that has been accepted by all teachers and students. The program was implemented to increase student attendance, achievement and graduation rate, which has been steadily increasing over the past few years. Last year, she increased teacher buy-in by having students reward teachers and staff by recognizing their efforts, which resulted in happier, more effective teachers and contributed to better workplace morale. Happier teachers and staff lead to happier students and increased learning. To complement her leadership ability, she has chosen to be involved in several after-school extracurricular activities. Dr. Sims initiated the Girls Who Code Club, which is specifically implemented to encourage girls to learn and go into STEM careers and secured a $14,000 grant in order to develop our computer science program at BHS. The grant allowed her to develop and maintain the Microsoft Teles program, which was first, our first computer program. She also developed and maintained the Marist Beacon Leads program. Through the efforts of this partnership, currently scholar graduates from Beacon High School attend Marist in the hopes of becoming our future teachers. This program was developed specifically to support students of underrepresented groups as a teacher pipeline for Beacon CSD. This demonstrated her commitment to the common good of the school and provided an excellent opportunity to build student relationships. Dr. Sims has high expectations for herself, colleagues and especially our children. She is a strong advocate for her students and their success. Her ability to connect with students and her mentorship talent at teaching are superior. She is highly organized, reliable and a reflective practitioner. Dr. Sims works collaboratively with her colleagues and parents to ensure that the needs of her students are met. She accomplishes... She accomplishes these tasks with the commitment to ensuring that all students are cared for and listened to. Within the last few years, she has facilitated various committees, including Building Advisory, BERT, and the Academic at Risk for ninth and 10th graders. And was very productive and helped launch the Student Directed IEE Process to help students self-advocate in the development of their plans. One of Dr. Sims' greatest strengths is her commitment to growing as a professional and leader at Beacon High School. She actively participates in professional development to grow and develop her knowledge, abilities, and skills. Last year, she earned a doctoral degree and serves as a role model for educators and students to never stop wanting to learn. Her commitment to professionalism, productivity, along with her positive attitude and a great sense of humor make her a joy to work with. Congratulations, Dr. Sims. So, it is a pleasure and honor to acknowledge Ms. Catalano for 29 years of service at BCSD. During her career, oh, you want to applaud? Yes. 29 years. During her career in our district, Ms. Catalano had the reputation for establishing strong relationships with students and our parents. Ms. Catalano was active in all aspects of our school and was very connected. She often served as a faculty advisor to student planning organizations and was also asked to be the class advisor until her retirement. She also helped organize charitable activities that the students found very enjoyable. As for her school counselor skills, Ms. Catalano still gets calls of thanks from former students who appreciate the direction she pointed them in. And a list of successful students is extremely long. Ms. Catalano was an asset to our school and our community. We were sad to see her retire, but we're very happy to hear that she's spending her time being a wonderful grandmother to her lovely granddaughter. All the best to your future endeavors, Ms. Catalano, and thank you.
Next, I would like to speak about the retirement of Coach Larry Collins. This year, the BCSD Physical Education family is saying goodbye to one of the cornerstones of our department. Not only has Coach Collins taught PE at each level in our district, he's been paramount in the creation and development of the aquatics program here at Beacon. Since working with Larry for the past seven years, I've come to learn a few things. Number one, aquatics coaches can come in many shapes and sizes, even if you're six foot five and look like NFL linebackers. Number two, despite whatever pranks Coach Mahan and Sabatella are pulling on Larry, I can always count on Coach Pomerico to keep them from taking it too far. And number three, it never hurts to double-check the spelling on the aquatics rosters when they're being turned into the main office. That being said, I also want to comment on a few observations that I've had throughout our relationship. Number one, he has an incredible sense of humor. Number two, he's a true advocate for the success of the students at Beacon. And number three, he has a passion for aquatics and is always willing to share, promote, and offer facilities to the students at Beacon. Larry, I want to personally thank you for the positivity, work ethic, and pride you have exhibited to the families of Beacon for the past 20 years. It is without question that you will certainly be missed, and I can only hope that I can convince you to stay involved with our pool for as long as possible. Best of luck to you and all your future endeavors. Congratulations, Larry.
All right, Mr. Giometta, please rise. I have never had to do that to anyone before, so here we go. Okay, I am pleased to recommend John Giometta for tenure as Athletic Director in the Beacon City School District tonight. In four short years, John has made tremendous positive impact on our students. From increased participation in athletics to revitalize PE curriculum, John is always finding ways to improve things for our students. This year alone, John pulled off a full athletic program during a pandemic and also led the district in a transition from Section 1, which we've been a member of for many years, to Section 9. John also helps out in all aspects of our school district, from delivering food to families last spring to checking in with students on a daily basis who are in need, to helping out with hallway supervision at Beacon High School every day. And lastly, when we're short a principal, he's always willing to volunteer and take over a school building for a day or two. In short, John is an exceptional leader in the Beacon City School District, and I am proud to recommend his tenure tonight. Thanks, John. I also, while I'm up here, I just want to say just a huge thank you to everyone that we've spoken about tonight. It's been an honor for me to work with you over the last four years. Uh, I'm excited about your future, whether it's the future of retirement or the future in our school district. Either way, the future's bright. Uh, and I'm also really happy that many of you are here tonight. And I'm sorry I'm talking in the opposite direction of where you're sitting. Uh, but it means a lot for us, uh, it means a lot to us that you're here tonight. Um, usually, uh, usually we would do this, we would have a nice cake, um, right when this part is over, and we'd go out and socialize for a little bit. We're not quite there with the indoor school rules yet. Um, and so, uh, and I like cake. It's a, it's a big part of my life. And so, uh, so next year, I think what we're gonna do is order a twice, twice as large of a cake. And you all are just gonna have to come back. And, uh, and we're just gonna have an even bigger reception. Um, because that's just, you know, you gotta have some cake after something like this. So anyway, uh, thank you really for being here. Thanks for your commitment to the district. It really means a lot, uh, to, to me, and to the board, and to all the administrative team here for everything you've given our students over the years. So thanks, and have a good night.
Thank you, Dr. Landau. We did, uh, miss one person on the list. Uh, Ms. Rincón, tell me what else is coming up.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Jalisa Rincón Tomizal, the Assistant Director of PPS here in Beacon. I have the honor tonight to share a little bit of a story from Ms. Irene Nivanya, who is a PPS Secretary here in Beacon High School, has been, was a clerk here for 19 years. 19 years of service under multiple leaders in the department. And her service helped really streamline the process here at the high school and across the district. Consistently showing up and helping all of us new people learn the ropes of how information systems work, who are the contact people in each building, and helping our families stay in contact, especially as we moved throughout the years. Her experience across the district and different buildings really allowed her to help me and the department as we moved from different buildings to provide some consistency and support to the staff as well in the buildings. So it is, I know she started the school year, um, right after COVID and did not return and retired in September. So we do wish her all the best of luck in her retirement, hopes that she's enjoying with her family. Um, wish her the best. Thank you all.
Thank you, everyone. This concludes our presentation. Thank you.
Thank you, teachers. Uh, it's always very moving to hear all these stories and realize how lucky we are to have your dedication. And, um, as Matt said, I wish those that are leaving the district the best, and thank you so much for your service. And those that are just beginning their time here, we hope we can, uh, be a big part of supporting you to support our students. Thank you very much. Can I have a motion to adjourn to executive session to review the employment history of particular individuals and to seek legal advice from a school attorney to discuss the collective bargaining with the CSCE Food Services Unit? Anthony, second by Kristen. Comments or questions? All in favor? opposed? Passes the full board again, nine to zero. Board expects to return in about half hour for a good one. Thank you. We are back. Thank you for your patience. Reviewing the agenda, there are a couple of changes. Um, changes to 11.14, revision to the McCormick Agreement, 11.05A, date change, 11.05E3, new item added to the agenda, 11.06, additions, addition of items W and X. Um, in addition to that, I will be asking during new business for the board to approve, um, the creation of an ad hoc committee to hear, um, candidates, final candidates for the Assistant Superintendent position. Are there any school or student presentations tonight or parent groups? Thank you. Uh, Matt, Superintendent's report?
Yeah, uh, I'll, I'll be brief tonight. We, uh, we're in the midst of graduation season right now and, uh, just wanna commend our schools for, uh, planning some really, um, nice outdoor graduations today. We had three 5th grade graduations, Glennum, Forrestal, and Sargent all went at the same time. I'd like to, like to add, so I could only be able one, but Anne Marie and Bill went to the other ones tomorrow. We have South Avenue at 10 o'clock. We have the 8th grade graduation, uh, for Roundabout, which is gonna be on the field behind the high school on Wednesday night. Uh, on Friday, uh, June 13th, we had the high school graduation at Dutch Stadium. That also was just well done. And I just wanna give a thank you while I have a moment to all of the staff members that were involved in planning this because it looks really simple when we do it. Uh, but, you know, the guidelines, I think, change for graduation just about every week or two for the last three months. And so we, there's a lot of meetings, a lot of planning, a lot of preparation, and a lot of people involved in pulling off what looks to be kind of a simple task and having an outdoor ceremony, but just a lot of effort went into it from a lot of people in the district. And so I just wanna say I thank you for that. And then I just wanna take a minute, uh, to just recognize somebody, uh, for a moment, uh, who's gonna be leaving us in, uh, a week, a week and a half. Uh, Eric Wright, our Assistant Superintendent for Instruction and Student Support, is, uh, moving on to take a position as an Assistant Superintendent in the Yonkers City School District. And so Eric has, uh, he's, was five years. He was a principal at JB Forrestal Elementary for four years. He's been at the district office the last three as the Assistant Superintendent for Instruction and Student Support. Uh, really done an outstanding job in every position he's had here in the district. Uh, just provided calm, steady, student-centered leadership, uh, from Forrestal, uh, up to what he's doing now. And, uh, and, and just has really provided a lot of, uh, um, really powerful, uh, directions for the district to go in. Uh, he was instrumental in changing, uh, the student code of conduct a couple of years ago, which really led us to some pretty significant changes across the district, especially at the middle school and the high school. Has worked, uh, on curriculum and instruction with teacher leaders and principals over the last three years to also bring about, um, some changes which are still ongoing. And, uh, and I said this, I think, in the letter that I wrote to the community a few weeks ago. I personally have learned a lot from Eric just in, uh, watching him work and also lots of conversations over the last, uh, four years that I've worked with him. So, uh, Eric, uh, sorry to embarrass you, but I'm gonna miss working with you. And I know Yonkers is very lucky to have you. And, uh, just wanna say this in your very last board meeting with us. Uh, so I, I, you know, kinda made Eric promise that he'll still answer my texts and my calls every once in a while. Maybe not, uh, quite at the level he does now, but, uh, I'm gonna miss working with you. And, uh, made a huge impact in Beacon in your nine years here. And I just, on behalf of, uh, me and the district, I just wanna say thank you. That's it, Eric.
Thank you. So, committee reports and board comments. Uh, Anthony Tsang, welcome back.
Thanks. So, uh, I don't have a diversity committee report, I'm sorry. I was out for almost two months, out of state for work. Um, but I, uh, I do want to, uh, congratulate all the tenure and, uh, retired, um, folks. It's, um, you know, I, I know some of the teachers who, as my kids have gone through the public school system. But now that my kids are graduated, I don't get to know them. Um, I don't get to know all of them. So, uh, it's good to know them in this venue, um, and I wanna congratulate all of them. Um, uh, um, and it was a nice ceremony. Thank you, Bill, for that. Um, I also am glad I made it back for the last board meeting of the year, of the school year. Um, uh, kinda wanna channel a little bit Mike Grotowski. Um, you know, where, um, you know, we should, uh, celebrate our, our accomplishments. Um, you know, what, what we accomplished in the 2021 school year as a board. Um, so, uh, um, I, uh, I don't have a list, I'm sorry. But I do wanna suggest that we put a list together, uh, maybe put our heads together and figure out what we've done in the last year and, and make a list, um, uh, as a board to tell the, the people that, that put us here that, um, you know, what we've done. Um, so I just wanna make that suggestion as well. Um, other than that, I, I don't, um, uh, pass for the rest of my time.
Thanks, Anthony. That's a good suggestion. Maybe we can talk about it at our retreat this summer. John?
Um, I just wanted to say congratulations to our graduates again. And I also wanted to say that, um, just to enjoy the moments that are coming up of celebrating formal junior prom, senior prom, like everything going on. Just enjoy these precious moments. And also, I just wanted to wish Eric Wright well wishes onto your new journey, man. It's as good as anywhere.
Thank you. Jasmine?
Um, just to piggyback, same. Um, congratulations, Eric. You deserve it. All the success and happiness for you. Um, and just congratulations on your last week, students. Live it up.
That's it. Thank you. Flora?
Yeah, so, uh, last week's, um, Public Relations Advocacy and Legislative Meeting, uh, we drafted a couple of statements for the next round of resolutions for the New York State School Board Association. And those are on the agenda tonight for board approval. I also wanted to share, um, an announcement from Food Services Director Karen Pagano. She wanted families to know that the district's free meal programs will continue through the summer in support of the educational enrichment programs happening at Beacon High School and at Roundabout. The meal hours for Beacon will be 7:15 to 8:30 a.m. for breakfast, 11:45 to 12:15 for lunch. Um, and at Roundabout, it will be 8 to 8:30 a.m. for breakfast and 11:45 to 12:15 for lunch. And that's gonna start in early July and end August 13th. They're also gonna be doing the Grab and Grow, uh, Grab and Go breakfast and lunches at BHS this summer. Um, it's a summer meals open site, once again, so there's no registration needed. It's for all children 18 and under, and parents can pick it up. And the families do not have to be, um, have students in the district. The students do not have to be part of the BCSD. So you just So you just come and pick it up on Wednesdays from 10 to 10:45 a.m. So the information about that program is also on the Food Services page on the website. And it's a great opportunity for anybody who needs it this summer. The final wellness meeting of the year is Wednesday, June 23rd. That's this Wednesday, obviously, at 3:30. It will be on Zoom and we'll be discussing a possible new format for the committee, more of a working group. So if that's something that you're interested in participating in, or if you have thoughts about it, please join us. And I also wanted to join everyone in congratulating people who received tenure and who are retiring. And thank you for your contributions to the district. And also farewell, Eric, you will be missed. That's it.
Thanks, Anthony.
Yeah, so the Kirkland Committee hasn't met since last board meeting. There are no intent to meet over the summer, I believe. So the Kirkland Committee will get started after, in September. In regards to the people retiring, I wish them well. I remember most of them when I was in school, Mrs. Rafford especially, holding me accountable to get to class on time and let me know if I didn't. And I'd also like to wish my cousin's wife the best in retirement, Diane White. I know that she persevered through some health issues earlier, later on in her career. But I think one of the things that helped her get through that was the school and the children at the school. And she's been such a warrior and running has been a therapy for her. And I know that she's going to miss the work at South Avenue and the kids at South Avenue. In regards to the tenure recipients, it's the beginning, not the end. So it's a great accomplishment, but I challenge you to continue to do great things forward for the district and for the kids. And for Eric, I wish you the best of luck on your future endeavors. Remember, family always comes first and work second, and keep that in mind.
Thanks, Kristen.
I don't know if we have a date set for the next facilities meeting.
We don't, we, we're trying to work with Bill, with our architect on next steps.
Okay, great. So it'll probably be after the reorg then? July 7th?
I just, I don't know for sure.
Okay, that's fine. All right, so we're going to continue to be working on that capital project and synthesizing the community feedback that we received and planning for the upcoming school year. And as soon as we have the date for that, I will let everyone know and develop the agenda. Congratulations to everyone who received tenure tonight and best wishes to those retiring. And yes, I'll just add my name to the list here, Eric, of people wishing you luck and the best. And it's been a real privilege to get to know you over the past several years. And I know that Yonkers is very lucky. Thank you. Greg?
Yeah, this is one of my favorite nights because we have the tenure and the retirements. And retiring myself a few years ago, I found it interesting to notice it just sort of gets hard to, because it's bittersweet, you lose a lot of your friends' contact that you've gotten used to. But on the other hand, you put your burden down. So by the way, I find for the first time, I started liking Facebook and LinkedIn as ways of keeping in touch with people that I otherwise would lose touch with. The graduation for the high school was wonderful. I just wonder how many high schools get to have graduations in a stadium with fireworks for the finale. And of course, it was special because I had a daughter going across the stage. I attended a meeting of the Foundation for Beacon Schools where I serve as an advisor, I think is the term. And that organization is working on becoming a much more fully fledged organization than seeking 501(c)(3) status. There's a very capable leader, Anna Sullivan, who's doing a lot of good organizing and some good people on that team. I think we'll see some very good things and some exciting incentives of a financial nature being offered to teachers who could come up with ideas for things to do that might require a little extra money that's not already in the budget. The challenge will be for the teachers, I think, to realize that it's there and that they need to think bigger and better and come up with some great ideas. That's more on the future, not quite the present, but it's well underway. So I feel the district is kind of at an inflection point now because we're coming out of the COVID times. And I'm looking forward to whenever we have a change that allows us to dump these masks and get back to something closer to normal. I don't know how that's going, but I'd be interested to hear at some point, maybe in the next meeting or at reorg, what our plan is going forward for the COVID protocols. So beyond that, I think that it's really a good time because of not just the moving out of the COVID period, but just because we've had a lot of changes in the district. And my thought is, you know, we have to figure out what's next. What are the bigger moves, the bigger ideas and visions? And translating that into strategies and decisions and protocols and all that detailed stuff that actually makes it happen. So I'm kind of optimistic about where we're going from here. That's it.
Thank you, Greg. I just want to say thanks for a great graduation. It was really, we lucked out with the weather, it was really beautiful and exciting to see kids cross the stage in person. And I also attended the athletics award ceremony and the band and chorus concert. And they were really great. And I hope we keep some of these outdoor traditions because they really add something special to it. I know it's a little bit extra work, but let's not forget too soon how nice it was. Oh, listen, I'm sorry. Last but not least, listen.
Thank you. Congratulations to all of our graduates and retirees and tenure recipients. And congratulations, Eric. I will miss your insight and perspective, especially on policy. I wish you the best and Yonkers is very lucky to have you, so best of luck. We have no policy committee meeting on the calendar because we have completed our goal for the year, which is great. So I guess the next policy committee meeting will be after reorg. So that's all I have, thank you.
Thank you, sorry about that. Moving on to new business, we have two resolutions that we need board approval for to send to NISBA and see if they want to take the resolutions forward as part of their agenda.
Is this where you wanted to add the ad hoc as a 10.3?
Yeah, I was going to add it after. I mean, I could add it now, but.
Yeah, I'd like to make a motion to add a 10.3 to the new business, the ad hoc committee for the vetting of the Assistant Superintendent.
Is there a second for that? Kristen, are there comments or questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, 10.03 added. Thank you, Anthony. Okay, so back to this resolution. There are two of them. The first one is supporting a statewide stipend for school board members. We talked about this a little bit in our PRL committee. And do you, Flora, do you want to just read it quickly?
Resolved that the New York State School Boards Association supports legislation at the state level that would allow for school board members to receive a stipend for their work as a trustee. Participation on a school board is an important form of public service with a direct impact on quality of life for children and communities. It is a volunteer position that requires a serious time commitment with no financial compensation. A small stipend would pose minimal cost to a district's overall budget and widen the pool of possible candidates for the position. While there are minimal qualifications required to become a board member, the time commitment required may be a barrier to participation for community members who are not in a financial position to give away their time. This is especially true for parents who may not be able to afford the cost of childcare during the board meetings. We believe that offering a stipend for members could mitigate such challenges and will encourage a more diverse pool of candidates that better represent the student body in most public school districts.
Are there any comments or questions about this?
We're, this is not something that we're introducing for ourselves. This is something that's part of the New York State School Boards, School Boards Association in order to become more inclusive. But I can say that, that a lot of my experience of coming to board meetings and then as a board member, I had really young kids and I could not do it without childcare. And the, if I added up the cost over that time, it was a significant, it was a significant sum. And definitely something that if we weren't able to stretch our budget at the time, would have, you know, precluded me from giving that time away. It continues to be something that I'm sure a lot of people grapple with. And I don't think it's something that everyone will need to access, but it's important that anyone who does, so that it allows them to serve and to provide a broader perspective and even understanding of how school systems work. Because I think that's the other side of this, is you have a much better understanding of the system itself, the levers, how decisions are made, and then you can communicate that to community members to foster a better understanding. That, having more, a broader reach for that is really critical too.
Anthony, anything?
Yeah, I'm a little, I've seen this before in other forums, like the city council, they wanted to upgrade, they wanted to increase their stipend.
Well, that is pointing out that they do need a stipend.
And the argument comes up, the same argument comes up, that, you know, you want to diversify the pool, you want, you know, that there is, not everybody can give their time. But my hesitation is that how they get here isn't based on anything but, I mean, I guess, isn't really based on anything but popularity. So, you know, I would like if we do get board members that need it to use it, to get the resources available to them. But the way this is written, everyone gets it. And I don't, I don't see how that's, that is an equity solution, equitable solution. It's just given everyone a stipend. If we were to do something more equitable, it would be that, you know, that those that need it would be able to take advantage of it.
Here, nobody forces you to take a stipend, or you could return it to the district in the form of a donation. There's no reason to, it's not automatically deposited in your account or anything, I'm sure. To recognize that when a resolution like this is created, I mean, the goal is that there's a discussion that's had at the association level. And so it's really, I mean, without getting too granular about how it's dispersed and what the mechanism is, it starts that conversation so that it can build advocacy at a state level. And so, I mean, my understanding of it is when we send a resolution like this, we're pushing the New York State School Board Association to advocate for this. And the details are not up to us to work out right now off the top. We just want to start that conversation. So that would be, that would be my response to that. I don't, I don't think we have to really figure out how, the details of how it's done. We just want to get it on the board, on the table, whatever you want to put it on.
Just a historical perspective, I believe in NISBA. About three to four years ago, advocated for something similar with the big city school districts, Yonkers being one of them, where they passed a resolution to have stipends for board presidents. And that was passed. And there are some larger districts that I believe do get, like the board president gets stipend for the additional time.
I do think that on the, you know, the flip side of your argument, Anthony, sometimes having to qualify for something or prove qualification for something is a barrier to participation for people for many reasons. And so I do think the simplicity of this language and, you know, who knows if it were to go forward, how much it would change by the time it became law. But I wrote this and I tried to keep it as simple as possible. I think that it is really just trying to acknowledge that we don't have always a diverse board. Our board doesn't necessarily represent our student body. Many school boards face the same issue and trying to look at ways that we can make it a more, I mean, attractive is a stretch, but doable thing for people. There any other?
I know I had spoke to a few different moms about applying and that was one of their biggest barriers. Who's going to be able to take care of, because after certain hours, it's 9:30 now, you really can only go with a babysitter that you know and trust. So yeah, I think it would actually help. It would have probably changed a lot of things if it was already in place.
I mean, I know in places where they do have it, it's not huge, but I do think it would cover baby sitting morning. That's probably, yeah, not a lot more than that. Any other comments? Okay, so can I have a motion to approve this resolution, 10.01, to support statewide stipend for school board members? So moved.
I'll second it.
That was Flora and Anthony.
Thank you for your opinions, by the way.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Passes nine to zero. Okay, 10.02 is resolution to support later school start time. Should we read this one as well? Flora, you did such a good job.
Oh, I couldn't hear what you said.
Do you want to read this one as well?
Okay, sure. Resolved that the New York State School Boards Association support this legislation at the state level that would set limits on the start time for schools to be no earlier than 8 a.m. Extremely early school start times are detrimental to a student's learning and health. According to the American Academy of Pediatrics, inadequate sleep in adolescents can lead to obesity, diabetes, increased anxiety, depression, cognitive impairment, memory problems, and drowsy driving. Ultimately, these issues impact academic achievement and graduation rates. Given that districts must coordinate their schedules for extracurricular activities, including sports, this is not a decision that can be successfully implemented at the local level. New York State must set limits on the start time for schools to be no earlier than 8 a.m.
Any comments about this or questions?
Yeah, I just have a comment that I haven't researched this enough to support in favor of it. I understand the, I've heard the arguments for the later start time, but I haven't dove into all the research. I get that inadequate sleep in adolescents can cause to that. But we're just saying, okay, the, the, the solution to that is, okay, have them, you know, come to school later. Well, the fallout could be that they stay up later and that they're not going to be getting adequate sleep because they don't have to come to school until later. I mean, so I just feel I haven't researched it enough of the pros and cons to vote in favor of it as it is. Would there be an end time, like school would have to be dismissed at a certain time?
Right, it pushes, I mean, the articles I've read have talked about how an adolescent's sort of like natural body clock is to go to bed much later and sleep later. And so I, yes, this would, this would push everything. I think right now, school starts when it does because it's convenient for everyone but the students. And that it is, it's, you know, it's incredibly hard on their bodies to keep up with the schedule.
And again, I'm not, I'm not prepared to debate the, I haven't researched it enough to say what are the pros, what are the cons? You know, I'm sure there's some cons to it besides, like, if it was unified, you know, there. you know, there could still be some cons. I just haven't researched it enough to vote my support for it. I feel like I need to do for my personal self, like, more research to see what the pros and cons are before I could agree to supporting it.
That's fine. I'm just telling you the research that I've done. They did approve it in California, actually. The earliest start time is 8:30 for high school, and it's starting this fall. So it is, it is a trend that I hope will continue. Talked about for years. I remember when we started doing school advocacy, that this was one of the things that was like, one of the pillars for improving the experience, especially for adolescent kids, mainly because it's the original, this start time of, for older kids is related to an agrarian system and the expectation that kids would have to be able to be home early and get the most of daylight to help on farms. So it's not necessarily something that matches with the way society works now in general. So I have read the science about... What's that? I think it was just someone in the hall. I have read that study. There's various studies about how the adolescent clock shifts to later bedtime, later sleep time. So, but it is something that would have to be uniform across all districts because then you have sports and all these other commitments that would have to be worked out. It couldn't be a one-off. But I support the idea of this becoming something that's discussed at the state level. Any other comments?
I was gonna say, what Kristen just said, I have a similar experience with that as well. That there was a study about the adolescent mind, and I got the same message from that as well. I mean, the other option would be to flip, you know how high school starts first, and middle school, and elementary school is to flip it so that the adolescents start later that way. And that's a logistical nightmare in itself. So this may be the better of the two options.
Or some combination, yeah. Any other comments? Can I have a motion to approve a resolution in support of later school starts time?
So moved.
Craig?
Second.
Alyssa, second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Opposed.
And in favor, passes eight to one. Okay, 10.03. Can I have a motion to approve the creation of an ad hoc committee to hear candidate finalists for the assistant superintendent position tomorrow, June 22, at 8:00 p.m. at the district office? So moved. Flora?
Second.
Anthony, or Anthony, sorry. Are there any comments or questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Passes nine to zero. Thank you for that. The consent agenda. "The use of the consent agenda permits the Board of Education to make more effective use of its time by adopting a single motion to cover those relatively routine matters which are included. Any member of the board who wishes to discuss individually a particular piece of business on the consent agenda may so indicate, and that item will be considered and voted on separately, thus preserving the right of all board members to be heard on any issue." Are there any items that anyone would like to have pulled from the consent agenda?
I'd like to pull 10, 11, and 14.
11.10, 11.11, and 11.14?
Yes.
11.03, 11.04.
11.03, 11.04?
11.08.
Any others? Okay, can I have a motion to approve 11.01 through 11.28, less 11.03, 11.04, 11.08, 11.10, 11.11, and 11.14?
Anthony, so moved.
Anthony, is there a second?
Second.
Flora, comments or questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Passes nine to zero.
I'd like to make a motion to accept 11.10 and 11.11.
Is there a second to that?
Second.
Anthony first. Who was that, Kristen?
Yep.
Kristen was the second. Okay. Are there comments?
Yeah, I just have two questions, one for each. The proposal, 11.10, that proposal uses up what's left of the smart bond? Okay. And 11.11, that proposal, what's left over from the American Rescue Plan? Ask for that proposal.
So we're asking the board to approve the proposal for a little over $200,000, and our American Rescue Plan is $4.2 million, so we still have $4 million. The reason that we are asking the board to use some of the American Rescue Plan is that because of COVID, we've had some additional expenditures related to cabling and fiber network. So it was not enough to do all of the work that we had to do for the, for the smart bonds. So that's why it's in two pieces.
Thanks.
Any other comments or questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Passes nine to zero.
Make a motion to pass 11.14.
Is there a second?
Second.
Second.
Anthony first, Flora with the second. This is the agreement, Catherine McCormick?
Yeah, just a little bit of housekeeping. Actually, so the handouts have executive content on it, which is pretty interesting. But the, for the public, but there is a stipulation that the page three was removed by our attorney. So the contract does say page one of three, two of three. There should be noted that there is no three of three.
Okay, we can note that. We did have the attorney review it. There's some, there's some changes that had to be made on data privacy because some of the older consulting agreements aren't up to date for 3012 date.
Yeah, I saw the addendum, so I'm sure that's why they removed page three, is to add the addendum, which has more comprehensive privacy rules on there. So I do appreciate the attorney's work on that. I just, in the future, when somebody's looking at this contract, let's say, for example, something being questioned or whatever, and they're looking for a three of three, at least they know why this doesn't exist.
Okay.
And now try to supplement something in there.
Thank you. Are there any other comments or questions? Thanks for your attention to that, Anthony. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Passes nine to zero. Can I have a motion to approve 11.03 minutes for the audit and finance committee? So moved. Who is that?
Flora.
Flora, sorry.
That's okay.
Is there a second?
Second.
Alyssa, comments or questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Opposed.
I'm in favor, passes eight to one. Can I have a motion to approve the minutes of the PRL committee meeting, 11.04?
I'll second. Oh, I'll first it.
Okay, thank you. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Flora, comments or questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Opposed.
I'm in favor, passes eight to one. Can I have a motion to approve 8.08, the claims audit reports? So moved. Kristen, is there a second?
Second.
Flora, comments or questions?
I just wanted to ask about the, how we figure out mileage. It seems to be kind of, just looking at the mileage reimbursements, it's some people submit a lot, some people seem to be doing some flat rate. And I didn't know we had some sort of process where we have certain people that do get mileage or certain people that don't, how that, and it's all kind of ending up on the end of year, which I understand. I just, when some people do say, like, they traveled X amount of miles and that's why they get reimbursed a certain amount, and then other people, it just seems to be flat rate.
So everyone gets a mileage rate based on the IRS rate? So at the reorganization meeting, that's one of the items that we go with to set the mileage rate at the IRS rate for whatever it is for the year. So if you use your personal vehicle to travel within the district, we don't have school district vehicles that we give to employees. Some districts do that. But every, they're all groups of people get mileage reimbursement from administrators to teachers that go between buildings, to our directors that travel between buildings. Not everyone puts in for mileage, so that might be the difference. But it is a calculation, it has to be a log, so it has to have dates and how many miles per day. And then we multiply it at the end by the IRS rate. I think in one of the claim warrant reports, you're seeing something that was done for multiple months. So that makes it look like it's more. But if you calculate it on a monthly basis and an average, it's about the average of what this person actually does on a monthly basis. In the future, it would be, I think it would be more transparent if it's done on a monthly basis so that you can kind of see what it's done and I can talk to that person about doing that in the future.
Sure, that would, yeah, it just seemed like it was...
Sure, no, no, I mean, you're right. It's not, it's not clear. I think it would be clear if it was on a monthly.
And then, so it said administrators, teachers?
All, all staff is entitled to it if you're using your personal vehicle from the building that you work. And so we do have staff that travel around the district all the time.
Okay.
Any other comments or questions? All in favor of 11.08?
Aye.
Opposed? And in favor, passes nine to zero. Can I have a motion to adjourn?
Second.
Flora, Alyssa, second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Passes nine to zero. Thanks so much. Have a great night, everybody.